Good evening and welcome to the Select Board, Monday, August 12th. Walkway Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, Mashpee, Mass. Stream live, live on Town of Mashpee website, It is 6:30 and we're convening in open session and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please. Thank you, and now we'll have a moment of silence. I need approval of the following. Monday, June 24th, 2024, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
In yes. Monday, July 29th, 2024, regular and executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Appointments and hearings relative to Regulation 25. I'm going to call up Drew and Paul. But before we start this evening, before we start this evening, I just want to set the record straight that this was not a special interest group that came before us. They're residents of Mashpee, their concerns of everything that happens in Mashpee. And that being said, we have people come in all the time and talk to us. We are the Select Board and we appoint members to your committees. And if we feel, or if there's a problem, this is how we address it. We've listened to everybody on the other side talk. Now we're going to listen and hear what Paul and Drew have to say. We have protocol to follow. Questions were answered, they were asked on May 28th, and Paul answered them on June 4th. And then there's a procedure that follows, and they're going to explain it to us how it works with the Home Rule Petition Authority, I'm sorry. So I'm going to give the floor to Paul Colombo and Drew McManus. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Select Board members, Town Managers, Mr. Collins, Mr. Taylor, appreciate your time. I think from the last meeting, I know Drew had turned over a bulleted list of procedures for amending bylaw regulations. And we have, over the past couple of years, have been through several regulatory changes for Chapter 172. I'm referring to Regulation 12 for mitigation, Regulation 27 for float stocks and piers, Regulation 30 for nutrient loading. And we are currently on Regulation 25. We have followed the exact same procedures and protocol that was outlined at your last meeting, and we have been following those same procedures for Regulation 25. 25 came up, as many of you probably know, because we had a contradictory set of languages in 25 for setback allotments. And former Town Council Pat Costello said, "You really should get on 25 quickly, get that revised, and get it approved." And in the course of working on that, the DEP then came out with all of their regulatory draft performance standards, which have gone through a tremendous amount of vetting process with several expert organizations throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Then the general public was allowed a lengthy comment period, in fact, it was extended, was it a month or two?
Two months.
And that's all closed now. So the DEP is sifting through all of the public comments, and they will be coming back with a set of performance standards. Highly unlikely that they would be more restrictive than what came out in the draft, most likely less restrictive. So as we, as a Bylaw Review Subcommittee, worked on our standards, we were keeping one eye on the state's proposed standards and the other eye on the sensitive environmental characteristics of Mashpee. That's our job. And as a member of that Subcommittee, only one of those members, the other two, I think Sandy Godfrey is here tonight, and Alex Solo is the other member, and of course Drew and I. We felt very good about what we had in the packet as a draft, because the standards that we were proposing were really no more restrictive than what we were seeing with the DEP standards. So that even if the DEP rolled their standards back a little bit, you can have a regulatory bylaw, which is much stronger than the state, that's the whole idea of a local bylaw, because of our localized environmental situation. I listened with interest at your last meeting. I did provide the email correspondence that I had with Mr. Malloy. And I think one of the most important concepts that is in that email, I refer you to the last question that was proposed, and I just got to flip this over here. It's a phrase that we've heard several times, "Will you meet with us?"
Yes.
We have met with them. We have met with them in our ConCom meetings, starting on March 7th of 2024, all the way down to our last meeting, which was 8/8/24. A series of 10 different meetings, eight of those 10 meetings, the PBA came and made public comment, well in excess of three minutes. I didn't have any kind of a clock running, I let John and others talk as long as they wanted to. And I presented them, as you see, with what I thought were very lengthy and explanations to the questions that they had. So I feel very comfortable in what we've done with the procedures, and I think we should proceed along with the exact layout of the procedures that Drew has provided to you. One of the things that fuels my interest and desire is looking at the Mashpee Hazard Mitigation Plan that this board unanimously approved. That plan is crystal clear. And if you look at some of the data that was used in that plan, and I'm referring to data from page 17 of the plan, on that particular page, "We as regulatory boards are encouraged under capacity to increase the town's capacity to mitigate risk through regulations." Regulation 25 was written in 2005. It does not address climate change, sea level rise, and excessive flooding in our resource areas. We all know that the problem of raise and replace exists in Mashpee. Raise and replace buildings come down as very small structures and go back up as much larger structures. In terms of elevation, no big deal, but in terms of the footprint, it's a massive deal in a floodplain, because you're taking up capacity for floodplain storage. You're also taking away the filtering capabilities when that water retreats back through the floodplain and into our bays and estuaries. You cannot keep building in a floodplain. You can replace. There is no problem with that, but you cannot expand in a floodplain, given the conditions that we're all facing. Climate change is no longer a hypothesis, climate change is reality. Sea level rise is reality. I've taken pictures over the last couple of years, I've sent them to the Town Manager, where you can't even drive into the parking lots down at our beach. This board had to approve moving money, because you ran out of money to try to save that parking lot. It's not just the parking lot of our beach, it's every square inch of our floodplain. So 25, I believe, needs to be revamped, it needs to be revised, it needs to be strengthened. If it's not, somewhere down the road, whether it's a year from now, whether it's five years from now, whether it's 10 years from now, we are going to have a problem that will make our wastewater treatment problem look small time, because the replacement that will have to be made, at the cost to the Mashpee taxpayers, will just be extraordinarily unbearable.
Agreed.
So that's, you know, that's how I feel about that.
Have you started your working group?
Our bylaw group?
Yes.
Yes, that began, actually, a year ago. We've been working on this regulation for, was it the middle of July?
And the meetings are public?
They were not public until the draft was released on May 2nd.
Okay.
The Bylaw Review Subcommittee is a non-quorum working group, working on town policy, and until that policy comes close to a finished draft and can be released to the public, then it's not a public document.
Okay.
It's just a policy group.
Drew, if you could go down the procedure of how this works.
Sure. So Drew McManus, Town Conservation Agent, erring warden and tree warden. So under the Home Rule Authority, there's an important distinction between making bylaw changes and the procedures for that, as opposed to regulations that fall under a bylaw and revising those regulations. So it's important just to make that distinction between the process of the two. If you're changing bylaw language, which is typically umbrella language that regulations emphasize and provide more detail as far as standards, you have to get on, you have to draft an article or articles, and you have to get on the town meeting warrant and everything that goes along with that. So that's bylaw. What we're dealing with here are regulations under the bylaw, and that's a completely different process from changing bylaw language. So basically, the process is, you know, we start out with our review Subcommittee, and we come up with a final draft of revisions. And in that process, all our meetings, you know, for the Conservation Commission, not the Bylaw Review Committee, are open to the public and solicit comments during public comment, or whatever, you know, agenda item is on the, whatever item, discussion item is on the agenda. So that's the starting point. Once we get to what we, consensus on a final draft, the next step is to send it off for legal review. And then after that, there are required advertised hearings, just like a hearing for a permit request, same process, gets advertised in the paper, gets put onto an agenda, and that is to solicit public comment. And that could be one or more hearings, depending on the level of public feedback and the exchange and what results from the initial public comment hearing. Once that process is over, the last process is once again to advertise a hearing for promulgation. So you close the public hearing, just like you would on a normal permit hearing, and then the commission has one final, you know, discussion, just to kind of finalize everything, and then promulgation takes place. And then after that, what we typically have done, it's not like a thing written in stone, but there's like a grace period the commission kind of discusses, to roll it out to the public. So just because it's promulgated on a certain date, doesn't mean there it is enacted for the public. The public needs time to adjust and acclimate and familiarize himself with the changes. So we typically, you know, institute a period of time where we feel is reasonable to have the public become familiar with the changes, and then set a date for actual enactment. So you've got promulgation, and then you've got enactment. So that's the procedure under the Home Rule Authority, and we have followed that procedure to the letter, as Paul described in all of our previous revisions to regulations, and we follow the procedure to the letter when it comes to changing our bylaw. And the most recent change to that, as everybody knows, is that extension of 50 feet onto our buffer zone. So, you know, as far as protocol and procedure, we've been very consistent in that regard, whether it's bylaw change or regulatory change. And I just want to add in just a couple more comments that, you know, when it comes to revising our regulations and even existing wording, there is language under the bylaw that provides an opportunity for applicants to, you know, propose something that may not be exactly in line with the performance standards of a given regulation, but allows the commission to consider something that, you know, the applicant believes may not result in an adverse impact to resource areas. So it's not all black and white, it's not all set in stone, there are allowances, just like a variance from zoning, or a variance from border health, there's a waiver from conservation commissions. And it's based on what is presented, there's deliberation, and you see whether or not that's something that is acceptable. And I think that should be, you know, that is a basic part of the review process and deliberation process for any regulatory board. So it's important for everyone to understand that that process permeates through, you know, everything that the commission reviews as far as permits, you know, coming up with standards for regulations. So it's important just to, you know, make that known to everyone and to the public especially. And just in closing, I, you know, I reiterate what you said, Carol, in regards to community engagement. I think it's an essential part of the process. It doesn't have to be written down just to be followed. I think it's just good practice to solicit community feedback, because from my own personal experience, if you've got members of the community that are coming forward and actually paying attention to what their local government is doing, that's nothing but a good thing.
That's right.
And I think the end result will work out best for everyone involved if you engage the community. And, you know, what that looks like ultimately is up to the discretion of each board, and I respect that 100%, but the fact that you have a group that's willing to engage and is taking an interest, I think that should be appreciated always.
And this affects the whole town, not just one little section?
It affects the portions of town that are within the FEMA-mapped 100-year floodplain, so it's not the whole town, and then the 150-foot buffer zone too, wherever that line that differentiates the 100-year floodplain from floodzone X. So it does affect a good portion of the town, but not the entire town. But, you know, from a holistic perspective, those who even aren't in the floodzone that take an interest to the town's resiliency in the face of climate change, it is of the interest of the entire town.
And agreed.
And all its residents.
And I thank you both.
Sure.
Questions, John?
Yeah, I'll go quick, and then I do have a follow-up question, but thank you both for coming in tonight. As the Chair stated, it is our job to listen to the concerns of the community. So to listen, so nothing to lose and everything to gain, it's transparency. Community group representative provided a list of questions, and you, Paul, answered it in a very, very timely manner. So thank you for that. I, with that, I just wanted to, just with that statement, I do have a little bit further on Drew, as far as, is there, so the public hearings, is that still to come?
That's still to come, because we want to get legal vetting first, just to see if what we have in draft form is actually feasible, from a legal standpoint. So that's very important, I think, to get that vetted out first, before it goes out to public comment. And that's not to say that public comment, and this is one of the ideas that I discussed with Paul, was if public comment wants to be submitted prior to legal review, to be included in legal review, I think we should be open to that. I think it just makes sense to include public comment, and you still have public comment as an official hearing after that. But to include public comment, you know, as part of legal review, as long as it's not repetitive, you know, I don't see any harm in that. I think it's just kind of being proactive, if nothing else.
One more, Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
And just as a follow-up to that, do you have a, would either of you have a projection of when that first hearing may take place? Just, I mean, it could be two months, are we talking six months?
I can address that. I can't, I can't give you a magic date, but I can tell you a little bit about the process. What we need to have is feedback from the commissioners first. We need to see if there are commissioners that are objecting to what the Bylaw Review Subcommittee is proposing. If all of the commissioners are okay with what's in the draft, then we would start proceeding along the lines of a public hearing and getting a packet together for legal. To date, we have not heard from all the commissioners, we're still waiting on, I think it's two, maybe three. Some of them are going to be proposing those in writing to us. So it's hard to give a date. I can give a guesstimate and say that, you know, maybe we'll hear from the rest of those commissioners by our next meeting, which would be this coming Thursday. Then the Bylaw Review Committee will take the feedback from all the commissioners and meet and say, "Okay, what did Colombo say? What did Clabroot say? What did Solo say?" And we try to pick off regulations, "Okay, there's no problems with these. Let's concentrate on the ones that there might be a hiccup or two that we need to iron out." So once we have that done, and at the still, at the same time, we're taking feedback from the public at every ConCom meeting, we're getting a lot of information in, we're inching closer to that legal review. Once we have that legal review, now we can start saying, "Okay, here's the first date for a public hearing, because legal process has gone through this and has given us a green light." But until we get there, I can't give you that.
No, that was, you answered my question, and again, at that, when you get to that point, it'll be advertised to the public when that public hearing's.
Correct.
I'm good.
Wouldn't be a legal meeting without that.
Right. Thank you so much.
And we try to do as much as we can to get it out to the public, like putting the final draft on in our webpage, and letting all the consultants know, you know, we have email distribution lists that, so every effort will be made, is the bottom line, to roll this out, this process out, when we get closer to that public comment hearing, so that everyone is, you know, can make all efforts to make as many people aware of it as possible, in addition to being advertised in the paper like.
Which is standard practice.
Which is standard, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair and Mr. Agent, just as a friendly reminder, just make sure if there is any correspondence coming from commissioners, that we're not violating the open meeting law.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
David?
I just want to state, just for clarity, you know, in our last session, in no way do I want to take away the public's voice or input in the process and chiming in on regulatory changes and things like that. I just feel as though it should be done on an individual level and not interacting town with homeowners associations in particular, especially where it's not, it, it, there was particular groups coming forward that actually.
Excuse me, can you speak up just a bit, or?
I apologize. I was just stating that in the last meeting, I, in no way do I mean to take away the general public's ability to chime in and be a part of the process. I feel confident with the process, as it was outlined in the paper before us, that opportunity is there for the public to comment and participate through the public hearing process. And that's what I felt was the sticking point to my concerns at the last meeting. I was opposed to the homeowners associations coming forward, and especially ones that are going to be affected by these regulations chiming in as a body in the process. That, I'd prefer it to be public comment during the public hearings, or public hearing process, and done as individuals, in my opinion. With that said, I feel like, you know, things are moving good, I have confidence in the process as it's being taken, undertaken, and I would advise this board to have a meeting with the state CZM, to come down and do a presentation on flood zones and the coastal changes. They have a very effective coastal mapping, interactive mapping, presentat, it's a forward-facing platform, anybody can go on the web and see it. When you look at that, it shows all the areas in question, they, you can zone it in to particular areas, you know, I spent some time looking at it, some of the areas that really jump out at me are, you know, Saconset Island, Monamaskoi, Papanessa area, those areas, you know, the mapping shows time periods, they scale it out in, it's at intervals of one foot, all the way to 10-foot intervals. At 10 feet, those islands are submerged, the houses, people will want to move out. So when you look at that, it puts things in perspective as to what's going on, what's in front of us. And so I just want all bodies, and this board in particular, to kind of be wary of that and have that information as we go through this process and consider what we're looking at and what we're looking to approve. I have confidence in both the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission in this regulatory change, and I think you all are doing a fine job.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for coming in and spending this time and explaining how the process works for us.
Sure.
I think the public and the residents needed to know that you are listening to them and their concerns, and that they're noted, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Discussion of Mashpee CARES School Committee Article for October Town Meeting. Jay Marie Stevenson, Chair Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, and Don Meyer, School Committee, Chair of the School Committee. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are we?
Good. Oh, hello.
Hey.
I've never met you before, which is significant, isn't it?
It's a good, good thing to meet, good to meet.
Not sure if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Well, we'll can talk about that.
Okay. We have an article on our town meeting warrant, to see if the town will establish a Mashpee CARES Town Committee composed of nine members, including Town Manager, Assistant Manager, Superintendent of Schools, Assistant Superintendent, at least one Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe Representative or a designee, Police Chief, Deputy Chief, Fire Chief, Deputy Fire Chief, at least one member from the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, and three members at large for community members and/or students. Those are a lot of people on a committee, and we already have a committee that's working. I think personally, it would be a good idea to move some of your people into the committee that's already working.
So I think there's a lot of discussion that will take place over the course of the remainder of this year and into next year regarding this. Unfortunately, we were a little bit rushed to meet the warrant deadline in July, and so we put this together in basically a week and a half, with the understanding that there would be subsequent discussion to take place.
We can discuss.
Right. I think there's more people that need to be included in that discussion than are represented right here, right now. And so we do have plans to meet with, on September 18th, with the Mashpee Diversity and Inclusion Committee, with Ms. Stevenson, and also with Ms. Blackburn. So there's going to be a lot more discussion to take place.
When does this article have to?
So, so let me finish, and I'll answer that question for you. At the committee's meeting on July, no, on August 7th, by a vote of three to nothing, we made a decision to postpone the article until next meeting in May.
I think that's a good idea.
I think that would give us all enough time to digest this, figure out exactly what it is we're trying to accomplish, because I'm not sure everyone is clear.
Well, I think it would save a lot of time and energy.
Yes. So I think there are gaps, can they be handled without doing a town article, potentially? If we need to, we've got a framework that we'll be able to work through, and I believe February is the deadline?
Yes.
So, like, February 10th? So we have a little bit of time, not a lot, a little bit of time.
I think that's a good idea.
To work through this and, you know, get more input from the stakeholders as we try to refine where people do think that there may be gaps that need to be addressed.
Very good.
Okay.
Marie, you want to say anything?
I do. I guess, to quote a famous movie, you know, "What we have here is a failure to communicate." And, and I remember going, when we had the local plan discussions with people in the town, and one of the things, and I was there, I remember people saying that we needed to have more communication between committees, and here's a perfect example, all right? And so the question that I had, that I would ask the school committee is, "Why?" And I have my theories about why, I have my total sympathy and empathy for the school committee and what they do and appreciation, and I was, you know, pretty much upset when committee and what they do and appreciation, and I was, you know, pretty much upset when, when the school committee, you know, was faced with a number of people in the community, and some very, very valid concerns from parents, but there was really, you know, an attack on the school committee and, and the superintendent at the time. At that point, I, I watched it, I wasn't there, so I did contact the Kathy Lewis at the time, who was the chair then, and said, hey, you know, would it, would, would it help if, if, if one of us or if I came to one of your committee meetings to see what our committee could do to support the, the school board? So that happened, but then, all of a sudden, the school committee met, as Mr. Meyer's just noted, and so I was informed afterward, and that was nice of them to let me know, so they sent me the, the information on what they had, and of course, I looked at it and went, whoa, just, we, we have a committee and, but I think it needed to be sorted out on what, what their, their needs are from that committee viewpoint. So, so I did kind of invite myself to represent our committee in a September meeting, along with Marie Blackburn, and the reason I've included her, two Marie's here, that she is the liaison now for the Human, Barnstable County Human Rights Commission, and so there is, you know, there, it's just to understand the avenues that are, are available, all right? So now, what I needed to do was bring, gather some information before I, I came here, because I really do believe in communication in a big way, and so I, I'm going, we're going to have a, we have a meeting next week, we didn't meet in July, so all of this happened, you know, so we have a meeting in August with the whole committee, in which time I will present the information, will let them know, you know, tell them that I am going, and what is, what do they want, what do they want as a committee for us to express and of course to support, and, you know, what's their role, what's our role?
You have until February to get it together.
And how can, yes, exactly. So we're, we're ready to, to, to work with the school committee, and, but then, just then, to summarize, I've had four, five, I've met with the police chief since this happened, I met with the interim superintendent, superintendent of schools, I've met with the assistant superintendent of schools, Hope Hanscom, who is going to be representing the school system, and our committee, a regular voting member, and I had an extensive discussion with representatives from the Anti-Defamation League, who had sent a, a letter to the committee and to, and to the police chief, interestingly, the police department, saying, is there anything that we can, you know, that we can offer? So really, I think, got a good handle on all of the pieces, if I could say that, and then we're going to discuss that and have a real work session next week, and then I'll be more prepared to come in and more than willing, not just me, but anybody on our committee, more than willing to work with the school committee and offer them the support they need.
Thank you.
And finally, I'll just say that what I see is that, you know, this was more, and that's, this is really important, it's more than just a school issue, we all know that. This is a community issue. So there were incidences that weren't, not in the school, but were in the town. So, you know, what we're working on is try, and we can improve, we can do better, there's always more we can do on our committee, but we have to look at, okay, how does what's going on in the community impact then in the school, and then the school bears the burden of really way more, you know, you know what I'm saying, it's, it's from the community, kids, kids are coming from a community, a broad community, not a social media community, a big community, right? And so I think we can work together, and I think we should.
Michaela?
I think my questions have been answered. I was wondering how the two committees would work together, what the overlap would be.
We'll work it out.
But, yeah, I think you've addressed my questions.
As it should be. Go ahead. John?
I, I just wanted to say one other thing, though, you know, from the school committee perspective, there have been a number of issues that have come up here, and I think what we're looking for is more, more proactive response team. We patterned this off of the old Mashpee Cares Initiative, which was done by Selectman back here, when he was on that board, and it was active for a number of years, and now, my understanding is this merged into Health and Human Services, I believe, but had a lot of the same representation at that point, and then it's, you know, changed over time. I think from our perspective, we're looking for something that's, has more visibility in the community and has the backup necessary, if that requires, you know, legislative backup, then that's what would be required. If it can be done through the select board policies, as it is now, then maybe that's the route to go. We're not trying to determine it, we're just trying to action it here.
Right. I totally agree with that, and I think there's two separate things, and I think we can talk about that together, there's two separate issues, and I totally see that, that there is, there is a need, we, we don't have a lot of authority, you know, we're advisory, and I think, I, I see the school committee, and I totally agree with this, is that, you know, support somehow from the powers that be and those in authority to say, okay, we need to support, we need to support the community and, and have, you know, those are in authority, really, to, to have a, to take this into consideration. I totally see that.
I'm sorry, did you want to go?
Yeah. I just wanted to make a quick comment. Marie, I, you know, I commend you and your committee, you know, the most, one of the most active, you know, committees we have in town, so thank you for that. I, I have seen, I mean, this, the listing of resources of this proposal, of members, I, I have seen them as active members, I mean, police chief, fire chief, superintendent, you know, former superintendent, they were at your meetings, they were, some were members. So it's the involvement, I understand, maybe there's a, maybe there's a tweak to the committee for consideration, but to set up, you know, to maybe include more school representation, I get that, but you have had superintendent speak, chief of police speak, the fire, I mean, you've had everybody in that committee speak. So you've, you've reached out and I, I commend you, because it's one of the strongest groups in the community, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just think this, obviously, this is a discussion to go forward. My opinion, I think those possible designees, that's a lot of asking for resources, that I don't know if it's just more of a tweak on the existing committee. That's my opinion.
Pardon?
I was just going to say, no matter how it's constructed, reconstructed, how it's revised or amended, I think it's important that everybody understand the authority of the group, it's important to understand the objective or the purpose, and the roles and responsibility of those on the, the group, and then obviously, what is the, the scope in terms of fact finding or conclusions? What are they empowered to recommend? And in terms of what Selectman Cotton just referred to, I would be interested in knowing how many staff resources it's going to require, because operationally, that is relevant, but obviously for a worthy cause, and something as critical as this, would we want to prioritize that? The answer's yes. Thank you.
David?
I, I share some of the comments that have already been stated, and that, you know, if we already have a committee that seems to be working, I guess my first question is, you know, what are the barriers preventing improved communication? You know, if communication is the issue, I, I guess I just don't fully understand creating a whole new committee to address a communications issue, is, is my thing. To John's point, you know, it's dedicating more resources, we have trouble filling committees already, and creating yet another committee just seems burdensome and maybe just, we're going about it in the wrong way. You know, I guess second question was, I guess I didn't really understand the fire department representation, and I guess lack of having a select board representative. It seemed like, you know, if it's advising the select board, you're going to, you're going to create another break in communication, unless you're relying solely on Town Manager to get that information to the, the select board, you know what I mean? And so, I don't know. Few questions around it relative to those things. The other thing is, I, I'd love to see, you know, the last part was, and three at-large community members and/or students, I'd love to hear from the students, you know, to be working on it with the relative parties mentioned earlier in the paragraph. So it's organic, and it's coming from the kids and meeting the needs of the kids and what they're experiencing and addressing, things from their standpoint. I, I feel like we could learn a lot from them.
Well, and it should be said that we have two students on our committee, so.
You beat me to it, Marie.
They are advisors, and they are very, very effective, so I do want to say that. We do have representation, we have a member in the tribe, we have, we have, you know, superintendent of schools, and I, I just, I think maybe we should just look in a positive sense about us, our, as a community. It was the select board, it was Rodney Collins and then the select board that said, okay, let's, let's have this committee, and they, it was a lot of work, Cal Sherman was there at the beginning, and with, with the volunteers and whatever, and, you know, if you look at any of the town websites, I challenge you to see any significant number that has a committee like this, so I think we should really represent, that we do that, and that you did come up with, you know, the requirement that there be a tribal member day one and a school representative day, you know. So all of these things are, are being done, and then, but I think, I think, I, you know, again, I think we can talk about, I, I think I see two separate entities here, and maybe we can talk about that.
Well, that's good, and I'm, I'm glad you're going to work it out.
Yeah.
And have a great meeting.
Yeah. I'm sure we will.
Thank you for coming in.
We'll keep you updated.
Thank you.
Now I know the chairman, he knows me, right?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Public comment. I know I'm going to say this last name wrong, but it's Irene.
Chikovitch.
What is it?
Chikovitch.
Chikovitch. I said it very fast. Good evening, Irene.
Irene Chikovitch, Sunset Strip, and current president of the Mashpee Environmental Coalition. Tonight, I would like to read the following public service announcement regarding an important upcoming event. The next Upper Cape Household Hazardous Waste Collection, sponsored by Barnstable County, will take place this coming Saturday, August 17th, right here in Mashpee. It will be held at the Mashpee Middle High School, 500 Old Barnstable Road, between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM. At the same time, same place, Catherine Laurent of the Mashpee DPW and the Mashpee Environmental Coalition are partnering on a combined textile recycling drive and secure shredding event. As it is, and as you probably know, as it is now illegal in Massachusetts to throw any clothes or textile items into the trash, this will be a convenient way for Upper Cape residents to keep hazardous waste products out of our waters, textiles out of our landfills, while safely disposing of confidential documents. Acceptable textile items, even if ripped, stained, or one of a pair, include clean, dry, and bagged clothing, footwear, bedding, towels, accessories such as belts and scarves, even stuffed animals for people and dogs, as long as they are clean, dry, and placed in a bag. This August 17th event is open to all, and it is totally free for all Upper Cape residents. Non-Upper Cape residents can also participate, but a fee will be charged for their hazardous waste. Additional information regarding acceptable hazardous waste and textile items may be found at the Mashpee Environmental Coalition website at www.mashpemec.us. I just want to say thank you to each of you for all that you do to assist this town. I know you sometimes don't have easy positions, and for this opportunity to speak to you this evening, and if anyone is interested, I do have copies of our flyer, and I'd be happy to share it with anyone in the room. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Michael Richardson?
So, okay, I was here about too long ago, had a wonderful, wonderful time. Thanks for calling me down. We're not a special interest group, we're actually interested in this town, and there's a couple thousand homes that pay an awful lot of taxes, and we want to contribute to the town, and we had questions, so we came to the source, we came to the people in charge. We asked for you to do something, and I want to thank you for doing it. We asked for a workshop, but this is probably the first step, hopefully. I guess perhaps the planning board had done something, a little unusual, and led folks in town to think that maybe that's an opportunity for other workshops, I don't know. But I just want to say thanks for having this session. I think there are some disconnects, there's some communication differences going on. I had not an opportunity to see that memo that Paul wrote in response. Had I seen it, I probably wouldn't have come and asked for something to happen. But be it as it may, I guess there is some disconnect still, but thanks for doing that, I appreciate it, and maybe we can work maybe better going forward. Thank you.
Hope so. Bob Orsi?
I'm the co-chair of the Papanessa Working Group, and I want to thank the board, first of all, for acknowledging that we're just homeowners, we're not a special interest group, and I've torn up the great speech I wrote, sort of saying that that's the case, so I'll keep my comments very, very brief. I appreciate and I respect everything that everyone has said here, and Chairman Columbo, but the thing that I think's a little bit inaccurate, that our, what we've done at conservation committees is just gone at the public comment period, and our comment basically has been, please just workshop this with the public, not just with us, with the public. This is possibly a regulation that, if I understand what I'm hearing correctly, could affect up to 2,000 homes. Let people have a chance to understand what's coming and to workshop this, okay? I do not, under any circumstances, if people know me, oppose amendment to Reg 25. I do not oppose tightening up any environmental regulations. I don't. That's not who I am, that's not what I'm about. And if the, if the Conservation Commission wants to have a public meeting with all of Mashpee just to discuss Reg 25, how it's structured, what it's going to accomplish, that would certainly make me happy. The concern I have, you guys talked about the process a little bit, is if you wait until the end of that process, you draft, redraft, you draft again, you present it to Town Council, and at the end of all that process, you have a half an hour or a 40-minute public hearing, that's too late for anyone to have meaningful input into what they think that regulation should say. So I'm, I'm just renewing the request for, invite all of Mashpee, the Conservation Commission, invite us all in, and just walk us through what's going on, what you hope to accomplish, and what our thoughts are. I think we'd feel a lot better if we had that opportunity to have some input in that way. That's why we came here, was that, as I'm doing, this is a public comment period, you guys aren't going to respond to me tonight, right? You're going to say thank you, and you move on to the next comment. So we're trying to do just the same sort of workshopping we did with the planning board, and early indications are that we're going to get a good raise and replace out of this. I'm getting buy-in from my community into raise and replace because we're having public discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. John Malory?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the other vice, or co-chair of the Papanessa Working Group. Really appreciate the time you took to, to make this happen today, and I won't talk about special interests, we know where we are, but we are a, a group of 580-plus homeowners, and I don't think you want all 580 showing up, so we are here trying to represent those folks. folks. Reg 25 is a broad and complex regulation impacting many different components of the town with long-lasting impacts to our community. Regulating lands subject to coastal storm flowage covering approximately 2,000 homes in Mashpee will have significant long-lasting environmental safety and financial effects. We think they should be discussed, we think they should be understood. We need a town-wide discussion. There's too much misinformation being spread around town and it's ongoing. I've heard it, I get calls, people saying, somebody said this, somebody said that, there's just too much misinformation. We need a town-wide discussion. The answers Paul provided to a few questions we posed early on were incomplete and did not address our concerns. We decided to move on and ask for a workshop where we can have a broader conversation. We asked for a workshop, which is a conversation between the town and the communities affected by Reg 25, to discuss goals, issues, and opportunities, to work together to develop and execute a critical regulation. We have asked for a workshop for some time now, to no avail. The community needs a chance to engage, to talk before the final draft is done. The regulation, as structured, says, let's have a public meeting when the document's final, capital F. Why in God's name would we wait till it's final? This is a complex regulation, let's get the community involved. We have attended many CONCOM meetings to listen and learn and comment. With all due respect, a conversation is a two-way communication and that's why we're asking for a workshop. If you want examples of how CONCOM has communicated with us, I suggest you watch several of the recent CONCOM videos. Waiting three hours and then being told it's too late to discuss isn't good communication. Waiting three-plus hours and being told you have three minutes to speak with no dialogue is not good communication. And I understand that's the format, I'm not trying to be overly critical, but there's no dialogue. Being told you don't have time to meet with us because people are busy, I understand, I feel bad for the folks on the CONCOM committee that are spending so many hours, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't take the time and do it right. A conversation is two-sided and it's there for a reason and we think we bring a lot to the table, we think we can add a lot to this regulation, we're very much in favor of a good regulation. We have ideas on what we think based on sitting in the floodplain that we might make, make it better.
One last comment, please.
Okay. The hazard mitigation plan was referred to in Paul's comments. It mentions, the hazard mitigation plan mentions best practices should be used. We still believe we should wait for the DEP, that's best practices. They just came out with 1,500 pages of comment letters to their process, we need to review them, we need to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Dick Noonan?
Dick Noonan, 50 Greenswood Road in Mashpee. I think much of what was on online has been said by the previous speakers, but I'll reiterate, I've been fortunate enough to attend workshops that the planning committee did about a month ago on raise and replace. I've been participating in workshops for the harbor management committee, a number of public engagements, and I'll only say that what I was able to learn through the interaction, the give and take between the town's positions and the needs of the residents was significant. I think the opportunity to engage with a workshop is an opportunity for both parties, to get the buy-in, to get the support. It's an opportunity for the town as well as it is for the residents. I hope you will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Johnston?
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm gonna say that at the outset, I'm not a scientist, I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not a developer, but my family has lived in Mashpee for over 70 years. My wife and I purchased here 35 years ago and we hope to retire here in a couple years. But our very small cottage with paper walls will just not do it as a year-round home for us. And so my concern, from what the little I know being proposed, it's not going to be affordable for us, it's gonna squeeze ourselves. And I, I think that's wrong. And I, I think it concerns me that when we bought so long ago, we were told we're not in a flood zone. And then, now we are and we're a quarter of a mile from any water. And it's beyond my comprehension as to how we'd be at risk in our home and we'd have to do all these things to make us. We would have to do all these things. Thank you. We would have to do all these things to be in compliance, which would make it not affordable for us. I did some research on what DEP was doing with their regulations, they had countless informational meetings, they had a comment period that they extended, they invited comments from hundreds of experts across the state and they're responsible for 350 cities and towns. They advise conservation commissions. And it just, I, I don't get it why this regulation can't pause and wait till these regulations come out from DEP. Doesn't make any sense to me. I attended one of the, I've attended a couple of the Conservation Commission meetings and I was a little, I'd say, taken back by one of the comments, really directed to the Pompanas at Community, suggesting that these are folks of means and have the time to, to go to these meetings. And I'm like, you know, my wife and I begged a bank to give us a mortgage 30 years ago. We're not wealthy people. In the community in Pompanas, this was a grassroots effort of over 500 community members that came together and was concerned about their community. So my hope is that this could be paused and let the DEP come out with their regulations so that folks can make an informed decision going forward. And then the little guy, like my wife and I, can build a home that's affordable, that we're not going to be squeezed out of the community that we so much love. Thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you. Marjorie Jackson?
Good evening. My name is Marjorie Rozdector and I'm a resident of Mashpee and a board member speaking on behalf of Save Pompanas at Bay. Today, we want to speak to you about the power of public and private partnerships, which have been vital to achieving Mashpee's environmental goals. We're very proud of our strong public-private partnership with Mashpee and with the hundreds of community members that deeply care about our coastal environment. We have spoken to Conservation Commission about wanting to participate in a workshop on Regulation 25 and would love your support to ensure that we and other key stakeholders are at the table to help achieve our urgent environmental goals. Save Pompanas at Bay is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization founded 30 years ago to protect and preserve the spit in Pompanas at Bay and to keep its waterways clean, safe, and navigable for generations to come. Our all-volunteer board manages the Pompanas at Spit, which it owns along with Massa Audubon. The Pompanas at Spit is a barrier beach peninsula and threatened endangered species habitat which forms and protects Pompanas at Bay, Aquay Bay, and Mashpee River from Nantucket Sound. We and Audubon are committed to ensuring public access for fishing, birding, and recreation and Mashpee's green economy relies on the spit and bay to thrive, including tribal shellfishing, oyster farming, and ecotourism. Perhaps less known is SPB's critical role in protecting Mashpee's residential and natural resources. We pay for and hold permits to dredge the Pompanas Island Channel, we supplement the town budget for dredging, and enable the town to deposit spoils from its channel dredging. The spit forms a protective landmass which mitigates flooding and provides storm protection for the bay and landward villages and its narrow efficient channel opening ensures critical flushing of Pompanas at Bay, which is essential to improving water quality. Over the last nine years, Save Pompanas at Bay has raised almost five and a half million dollars and we effectively supplement the town budget by about a half a million dollars each year as we perform these town functions. We've collaborated with the town to raise an additional $600,000 from the state and just applied for another $2 million grant for coastal restoration. 100% of these funds have gone towards maintaining permits, dredging, dune and beach restoration and nourishment, and protecting endangered wildlife on the spit. So how does this relate to Regulation 25? It's very complicated, as you've heard, and will have a significant impact on our community and Save Pompanas at Bay's projects. Its impacts need to be fleshed out and understood by the public and we need to better understand how our dredging and coastal restoration will be impacted, not only by conservation, but by other committees and boards, including waterways, wildlife, fisheries, and DEP. The current state and trajectory of environmental degradation in our community's resources is unacceptable. We need to educate and engage the public to buy into these goals and to change behavior. Save Pompanas at Bay believes that a workshop could be a critical step to ultimately rallying the broader community around our shared environmental goals and we're hoping that members of the select board will please join us in this community-wide effort and discuss the many ways that we can make a difference. We look forward to building on our successful partnership in the days and weeks to come. Please let us know how we can help.
Thank you. Glenn McCarthy?
Hi, Glenn McCarthy from 16G Place, which is on Pompanas at Beach, which is not Pompanas at Bay, but very, very nearby. Just by way of introduction, I'm also a special project lead for the citizens of the protection of Ocoy Bay, a friend of Mashpee Wakeby Pond, Johns Pond, Deshumeat Pond, Santuit Pond, the Mashpee River, the Quashnet River, Quaker Run, and all of our water bodies in town. They all suffer from generally the same issue and while we know there's lots of details that we're not going to go into because we hear it a lot, the, the solutions are coming and I'd like to say to start that it's been incredible to watch the town in the last four or five years come together around clean waters and wastewater and make the changes. So it's, it's just super encouraging and Mashpee's becoming a leader on the Cape and in other, other areas. About Regulation 25, yes, Pompanas at, and I'm a Pompanas at resident, is a little late to the game, kind of woke up the neighborhood, which I think is a great thing. The more people who are involved, the more conversations we have, the better. I think talking and meeting is good and while I do agree, and I, you know, I've been following this for a while, there's been a lot of conversations, public comment at meetings. Drew was at our community center, Evan was there. If there needs to be more, then great, there needs to be more. And I certainly hope and agree with my neighbors that as that happens, that Regulation 25 can be improved based on residents' inputs. And I'll go to a little specifics on why, but I'll be quick. I'd be remiss to say, if I didn't say that, I spend a lot of time on the bays and the rivers and in the woods and in the trails. I hike, I bike, I kayak, I sail. I look around and what's out there is egregious. And if you go down Pompanas at Creek on a boat, just look up, and I like to remind people, underneath that house is a cement box filled with everything that went in the toilet, down the dishwasher, from the shower, from the washing machine, and you just think about, where, where is that water going? So when you look around, it's concerning and I am happy to see that the Conservation Commission's taking some action. Three goals, and I'll finish. We want to keep our long-term residents in their houses also. My daughter's third generation here, we have people who are fourth generation. We want our long-term residents to be able to add a bedroom and stay in their house, which I think is common with one of Mashpee's goals, which is keeping year-round residents in their homes, which I also support, and affordable housing. The second one is, we, I don't want to see an increase in the flow of wastewater. I think it's, when you add capacity, if you're hooking, if you're spending $100,000 to hook up a house, it's crazy to add capacity somewhere else and dump it right in the bay. And, okay, finally one, I want to protect the floodplain. It's been said, our streets get flooded. I see new construction sites today that are discharging right into the ponds, septic's getting swamped. And in conclusion, we want a solution where our long-term residents can add what they need to. What we're getting are just monster raise and replaces and big houses adding capacity that I don't think benefits any of us and I don't think the majority of us really support. So I believe there's a solution that everyone can agree on and I hope that we reach that and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, correspondence?
I didn't get a chance to sign up.
Okay. Come on up.
I am the chair of the Human Services Committee, but I'm not speaking officially for the committee at this moment, nor has Marie Stevenson, does she know that I'm going to say this. This committee, the Conclusion and Diversity Committee, is an amazing committee. We were happy in Human Services to share some of our funding with them, but I think if this town is really serious about supporting all the efforts that they do, let's see if we can give them some more resources, whether it's staff time, or funding, or anything that we can come up with, because all the amazing work that they do and it's a lot of volunteer time, I think, you know, the town will only benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, correspondence and communication. Okay, new business. Discussion and approval of the following resignation. Conservation Commission Member-at-Large, Erin Copeland. I know Erin really enjoyed being on the Conservation Committee and I'm sorry to see her go. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
With regret?
Yes.
Okay, old business. Discussion and possible action on Articles of October 21 Town Meeting Warrant, Draft Number Two. I think we're moving right along because there's not too much left. Okay, we've done that. So Article Two, Page Two. To see if the town will vote to rescind past action and return a certain amount of money to the Community Preservation Fund. Do we have that figure yet?
I've seen it. I have.
She just left you.
I was gonna say, Arden Musso was here.
We still have time, right?
Yeah, we have time.
We have time, but she was just here, it's a shame. We're meeting.
Thursday.
Thursday. Meeting on Thursday night. I don't know if we have the figure yet. What is the deadline? What's the absolute deadline? That we do the.
One, two meetings.
Two, okay. So we're okay. Article Three, so we'll still hold. Article Two.
Yep.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Article Three, Page Two and Three. That's another one. So we'll stay, hold that one still. Article Four, Page Three. We'll hold that one also.
Hold that one.
Okay. Article Five, Page Four. I want to talk about this one. Can we talk about this one for a minute?
I'd rather defer to our next session.
Okay. Article Six. We'll hold that one still on hold.
Yes.
Article Eleven, Page Six and Seven.
Article Seven?
It's Article Eleven, it's on Six and Seven.
That one you just, the school.
Oh, that's the one they're pulling. Okay, so that one's pulled, thank you. And Article Twelve, the road taking. We might as well, we can vote on that one. To add and support Article Twelve, it's a road taking.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we did one anyway. Laissez-aller reports.
Actually, just, Madam Chair, actually, it's to add and support, we're, it's a petition article?
It would just be to support.
Just to support.
Right, that was, I just wanted to make sure that for the minutes that was.
Okay. Thank you.
Right?
Thank you. Okay, laissez-aller reports. Michaela?
I don't have anything right now.
Okay, David?
I do not.
John?
Uh, just not specific, but Mashpee Night Out was another amazing time.
Yes, it was.
It always is, but I literally just, I could not go around and just see so many smiling, happy kids, just, they were just running around and it was just good to see.
It was good. Well-attended.
The weather held off, so.
And also the Latavala Night for the Chamber, it had almost 400 people. And Michaela, she was the check-in girl this year, which was great, thank you for volunteering.
Absolutely.
And. And John and I attended it, it was very good food.
Great, great time.
Great time. Okay, water quality updates.
With regard to IMAs, we have a meeting for the Pompanessett IMA this upcoming Wednesday, and we're meeting with Ocoyde and Pompanessett IMAs in the, we're trying to set September 25th, so we're still waiting for confirmation, but those two are moving along productively.
Anybody else have any water updates? Town man?
I do not.
Town manager update.
Yes, we have received a Community Development Block grant in the amount of $4,65,000 for rehabilitation of housing. We need to address questions, special conditions. We can do this through Opera Funds at the county level. We need to get this in for consulting, and the group reporting to me just needs approval for implementation to get the ball rolling, so to speak. So unless there's objection from the board, then I'm going to get it moving forward, unless there's an objection from the board.
Everybody okay?
Do you need a motion to support your...
Or a letter of support from the board?
Either or. I mean, I, I'm just, I want to get moving forward, and the only thing I'm concerned about is, we didn't have an agenda right, and so I'm not really sure that you can vote.
On it.
So I'm telling you I'm doing it, but if there's an objection, then I won't do it.
Is there any objection? No, I don't hear any.
No objection.
No objection.
So I'm doing it.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Michaela, I need a motion.
I move that the board convene an executive session pursuant to General Law C 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to the following. Litigation with regard to Matthew Haney, trustee of the SN Trust versus Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, Robert Allen Wolfie, and Michelle Wolfie. Potential litigation with regard to 91 Bayshore Drive, Kathryn McBrien, with the chair having declared that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. The Select Board will not convene an open session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Michaela, David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.